I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Councilmember O'Connell, who will not be joining us this evening.
Right. Move on to the adoption of the agenda. Any changes?
I would like to close in memory of Noble Vanover, who passed away on October 15th. Noble was a longtime Brisbane resident and raised his kids here in town and probably seen him as the walking man, guy who'd walk around town, always had a baseball cap on. And he just turned 87 in September 26th, but he passed away the 15th, so I'd like to close in Noble's memory.
Okay. Want to make a motion to amend the agenda accordingly?
So moved.
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Attorney, report from closed session.
Mayor and council, there were two items in closed session this evening. First was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, consideration of initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9(c). One potential case in this matter, direction was given, no reportable action was taken. Second item was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the case Watkins v. City of Brisbane pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9(c). In this case, direction was given, no reportable action was taken.
Okay. Thank you. Our communications number one. I have two slips. First, Laurie Liu.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members. First, I just wanted to thank the city staff for putting on a great day in the park a few weeks ago. I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, but I wanted to thank them. I know really that a lot of people enjoyed coming out with their families and it was a really fun time. And as well, last weekend was the children's concert at the library. The pop-ups performed and it was a packed house and my family was there and it was a really, really enjoyable concert. So I want to thank the library for putting that on and the city for supporting that. And the last thing I want to mention is Measure T. As many of us know, that's coming up on the ballot and I'm thankful that the city council has supported that. And I just want to encourage people to get out there and vote. And personally, I support the measure. I know there's been a lot of mailings received and perhaps some voters are being confused by some mailings going out by the committee to protect Brisbane. And it's my understanding that many of the Brisbane residents do support the measure. We believe it would be good for the city. The tank farm used to pay sales tax and we believe that to encourage them to pay their fair share, that this is the right thing to do to diversify our tax base and to improve the city's revenue. So, thank you for putting this on the ballot and I encourage all voters to vote yes on Measure T. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Laurie. John.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is John Christopher Burr and I am proud to be a lifelong resident of Brisbane. I'd like to talk very quickly about the tank farm issue. I was a teenager when this proposal first came to town to build this monstrosity and I was one of the people who opposed it. My father opposed it. Almost all the environmental community opposed it. In fact, I can't think of any citizens that showed up to the meetings that were in favor of this thing. But, the railroad, which owned it at the time, was very powerful and they came in and did the typical dog and pony show and got the council, you know, to see dollar signs in their eyes, right? Let's get that money. Let's get that money. And so they presented to the city council that they're going to make a lot of money on sales tax revenue. And so, I believe their lawyers came in from Grobeck, Fletcher and Harrison, perhaps, who used to be the railroad's attorneys. And I don't want to disparage them too much because I used to be friends with one of the senior partners there. Anyway, so, there was a presentation and the citizens thought, said it would be a pollution, a source of pollution, a source of danger, and it would be a public nuisance. And of course, that's what it's really turned out to be. So, anyway, it was passed, it was built, they got their use for it. And for the first couple of years, I believe it was, now, you know, my recollection, this is based on my recollection, they paid the sales tax and the city was saying, "Oh, what a great move we made. We get all the sales tax from this big tank farm here with gasoline and jet fuel and diesel and who knows what else is in there." Anyway, so, and I believe that this was planned all along. So shortly after a couple of years of paying these taxes, they turned around and sued the city. And I believe that they claimed that because of interstate commerce laws, that they were a federally regulated utility somehow because of the railroad and therefore didn't have to pay state sales taxes. And so, they got a complete refund for all the money that they'd paid. Now, in my opinion, we've never had, and I don't mean to cast any aspersions on our current city attorney, but in my personal opinion, we've never had a really good city attorney in Brisbane. And so, our city attorney didn't do anything like turn around and sue him for fraud and misrepresentation, which of course he could have done. He didn't do that. He just sat there and said, "Oh, we're going to get screwed" and that's what happened. So that's kind of the history. They've gotten away with murder for all these years. Now, a couple of years ago, this particular, I couldn't believe this when I saw this, but the Bay Area Quality, Air Quality Management District cited this particular tank farm as the worst toxic air polluter in the entire Bay Area. The worst, number one. Worse than Richmond, worse than Chevron, worse than Benicia, worse than any of those refineries that we have all around the Bay Area. This was by far and away the absolute worst. And I remember thinking, if they put in scrubbers, which they were ordered to do, and they reduced their pollution by half, they would still be at the top of the list. So, they've been a constant source of toxic air pollution, cancer-causing toxic air pollution, I should add, this the entire time, for years before that. So that was, what, 20, 30 years of that where they did nothing. And it's my understanding also that there's been leaks into the lagoon and around the tank farm and also into San Francisco Bay because what happens here is, there's a pipeline that comes along, comes across San Francisco Bay, along the lagoon and feeds this toxic air polluter here, which I think is a public nuisance. So, the city, as far as I, it's my information because my wife is on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, has said that, we've asked them about some of the pollution and whatnot and the leaks and so forth, and they've been completely uncooperative, saying, "We only have to report to the state fire marshal. We don't have to answer any questions of the city." So I wouldn't say that's a good neighbor. And the campaign literature that I've been seeing, which appears to be false in some respects, I think I read that they're actually based in Oakland too. So it's a bunch of outsiders really agitating the citizens. So they claim they're a good neighbor. And also, it's my understanding that the so-called free rent that the city gets for the corporation there was basically a pre-existing obligation from a corporation that owned it before these guys. So, they have done nothing, as far as I can see, to be a good neighbor to Brisbane. Now, they make also a big deal about vacancies. And I think your attorney can tell you what the post hoc rationalization means or the fallacy of false cause. When I learned it, it was basically, the Latin was post hoc aeroprophter hoc, which means because of this, therefore this. So it's a time kind of a thing. It says, because this occurs, then this occurs, therefore the first thing causes the second thing. But of course, that's not true necessarily. Factor C could cause this, factor B, for example, could be some other kind of cause. And here, that's what I think has happened with the vacancy situation, such as it is. And furthermore, I think that the information they're putting out is false because at candidate's night, the Chamber of Commerce said that we had something like an 80% or 90% fill rate. It was, you know, it's not that bad. And if you consider the building going to South City, that thing was vacant for like five years or something, maybe 10. So, you know, really the problem with the economy can be traced to real estate speculators, mortgage rip-offs, banks ripping everybody off, that whole thing, credit default swaps, all that sort of monkey business has hurt the economy and of course, there's going to be problems elsewhere. Another factor which of course could cause vacancies is, we now have the internet and Amazon and retail space just isn't what it used to be or any kind of space. People are not doing that anymore. Lots of places are going vacant, lots of places are closing up. The model is different from the way it used to be. Let's see. And I have one other point here too. Now, it's from what I understand, there's two, over 2 million of gallons go through this, go through this tank farm every day. If we got just one cent per gallon in sales tax, that would equate to over $7 million a year. So, I think the $400,000 being discussed is way too low. Way too low. We should be getting a penny a gallon at least, like other places get, so that we get $7 million a year off them, not a mere $400,000. And to be quite frank, I have little or no sympathy for giant oil companies. I mean, you know, they're wrecking the planet and they're ripping everybody off. Let's face it. So, you know, Kenyon Morgan playing boo hoo hoo when they're a multi-billion dollar company just doesn't make any sense to me. So I, I hope that this clears up some of the, some of the facts here. Of course, you can clarify and clarify anything if I made a mistake here. And that's about all I have to say. I'm just trying to clear the air here and I think it's my job as a citizen to do that. So thank you very much.
Okay. So we had two lawyers under our communication. Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Not seeing any others?
Yeah, maybe before we move on, maybe, you know, there's a couple of points that were brought up, maybe David or city attorney could kind of clarify a couple of those things perhaps. You know, like, you know, he, you know, like the corp yard and I think he's a little bit off-base with that, but I think, can you just explain the corp yard and how we attained being able to use it? There was the agreement that was, that happened a long time ago.
And just in brief, there was a four-way settlement agreement between the city, Southern Pacific, the tank farm and I believe the owner of the, was currently the Balans at the time. And there were disputes regarding a number of different issues involving land use entitlements, involving subdivision of the property. And so, as a result of a very, very lengthy negotiation process, there was a four-way settlement agreement. And as part of that agreement, as exchange for, for benefits that were given to, to all the parties in consideration of what was in the entire agreement, the city was given the right to use that portion of the property that's currently in the corp yard for a dollar a year as a result of the settlement agreement.
For 30 years.
Yes, for 30 years. $30 was paid upfront.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a fun thing. It's a presentation and it's not going to be a surprise presentation because this person already knows what it's all about. Because at the, right, at the day in the park, traditionally, the Parks and Recreation Commission provides a recommendation to the council and the mayor stands up and says, "Okay, this is the person that is the volunteer of the year." And that person was announced and everyone clapped and everyone heard who was at the community festival. And I made a little speech and I'm going to reiterate some of the points of that speech because I think they really characterize how worthy this current recipient of the volunteer of the year happens to be. I did want to point out that we have this volunteer of the year program for about 20 years, but volunteerism goes back a long time in Brisbane. In 1930s, we had a volunteer fire department. And when the Parks and Rec looks at all the nominations they get, then they get quite a few because there's a lot of important volunteers in Brisbane. They have a problem with picking, you know, who's the most worthy. But I don't think the problem was that great this year because this person is quite amazing. In fact, I think his little name is Volunteer. He came to Brisbane 25 years ago and among the things that he has done, he was one of the, if not the initiator and continued to participate in the goon cleanup. He was one of the founders and continuing to participate in the community emergency volunteers. In fact, he served five years as chair, I believe. And he provided or has provided his carpentry and building skills for the remodeling of the Silver Spot Preschool Cooperative. He prepares the sets for the annual Brisbane Dance Workshop performance at Mission Blue. He's built benches, picnic tables and planners for all the local schools and many other park projects. He's the regular supporter and general cleanup guy for all school events. Currently, he's been managing this collection of plastic and glass bottles that you get a nickel back on.
Recycle them.
Manage that project and has already raised $10,000 for the local schools. Which is, you know, quite an amazing project and it's quite a managerial task that he has engaged in to make all this happen. Well, anyway, it's obvious that this person really deserves to be volunteer of the year and I'm talking about Handy Dan, Dan Sartino. Now, I have a plaque which I will administer and let Dan say words and I know maybe some other people would like to say some things after that. But let me come by and give you your plaque and then I know you have something to say because you told me.
Exactly. Thank you, Ray. Do I get to talk now? Good evening and thank you to Jackie McLaughlin for nominating me, for encouraging people to write nice comments about me. Jackie decided that I was a person that might be worthy of this honor. All the people who wrote those nice comments, I'd also like to thank. I haven't seen them myself, but I understand they're on Facebook. My wife Nancy and my daughter Rita, who's here with me this evening, who helps with recycling at the hardware store. And this year, our goal is to increase that amount that we're donating to the schools to $20,000 a year. We've done $10,000 a year for two years now. It's increasing a little bit. We want to tip the balance and get all the businesses in town to bring their recycling to the hardware store. People that work at various businesses, many people work at businesses that are only like 20 employees, bring those recycled to the hardware store and we'll increase this to $20,000 a year. That is a significant number which helps the school support teacher salaries. So thank you very much. That's all I had to say. Good night.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Would any others like to add any comments?
I'm Renee Marmian and I'm a commissioner at the Park and Rec. And really, Dan, this was a no-brainer. In fact, we had it planned about a year in advance. And there were a lot of letters that came in, in support for you. And I'd like you to come tomorrow to the green team at Lippman and help us, because we're doing all the recycling that's coming down your way. We have a green team. But Dan's been very good. In fact, he put in four picnic tables up at Lippman, gave us four picnic tables. So he really is Dan the man. So I encourage anybody to use him. In fact, I'm just thinking of a little, our gazebo needs a little refurbishing. And maybe he could help us out if Public Works is a little short-staffed. Putting a little plug there for him. So I want to thank you for dishonoring him and so does the Park and Rec.
Okay. I knew Clara would want to say something.
Well, I can bear witness, that's Clara Johnson, to many of Dan's volunteer accomplishments because without him at times, the community emergency volunteers would have fallen apart. And he, he has something that we have some difficulty finding and that is, he doesn't have boundaries. Something needs to be done, as you could hear him tonight when he was soliciting more business for his recycling venture. He will just keep going and keep going and keep going. He has a tremendous capacity for work and he uses it to help others, whether it be the community emergency volunteers or the schools, which I can also bear witness indirectly and by looking at those benches that he's constructed. He's a wonderful asset to our community and I think that this honor is well-deserved and I think when it comes, it's just the right time because you allowed him to do that much more by waiting this long. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Clara. Yeah. Anyone else? My colleagues want to add anything?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Cliff?
Dan, congratulations. You know, it's kind of cool, you know, Dan and I, we've been parents, you know, with kids, you know, the same age. And, you know, when you, when you have children that are the same age, you spend a lot of time with the parents and I don't think there's anybody that I know of in town that has done so much as far as volunteering as you have, Dan. You just keep giving us, as Clara said, I mean, you have tremendous amounts of energy and it's, yeah, I mean, you know, you're so youthful and, yeah, you're a great, you're a great role model and I know that you get a lot of satisfaction out of the stuff that you do. I mean, you're doing it just because it makes you feel good and it's very contagious. And when I see you out there, it makes me want to, you know, do things too and I know that it makes others want to do it as well. And, you know, that's why the things that you do, you get others to come on board and that's why the things that you get involved in are very successful. And even at times when, you know, some things might, you know, start to fade and you're there to rally and bring it back up again. So, yeah, I hope that you keep, keep up the great work and we're very, very lucky to have someone like you in our town. Thank you, Dan.
I wanted to comment that...
Come on up. They won't, can't hear you on TV back there.
I wanted to comment that Dawn Cutler decided to do, help with the sorting process at the hardware store of this recycling stuff. It's a, it's a big tray where it's like five feet wide and 12 feet long, a couple feet deep and fills up every week with bottles and cans and somebody has to go there and sort it. And there are various people who've been doing that, myself included of course, over the last few years. When Dawn Cutler decided that she and her children, her child and her husband, would come on Mother's Day this past year. So since she did it, I went out and asked other families if they would come and help. We have 21 families now sorting the bottles and cans at the hardware store with their kids.
Yeah, that's great. Very great. Okay, Dan, I gotta confess this now, I've never told you this before, but, you know, I have these visualizations, you know, of people and stuff like that. And you, I see you walking around in this bunny outfit with a big drum going like this, boom, 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 in this direction, that direction, every direction. And it tickles me because it's real, that you're that Energizer Bunny, you know, the guy that's all around. I see you at the school, I see you at the park, I see you at city functions, you're everywhere. And, you know, I don't think there's anybody more proud than you in this room right now than that young lady sitting right next to you. And what a great teaching tool that you're doing for the community and getting other families involved like that. So, thank you, Dan. Yeah. Wish everything was so positive. Okay, so we move on to some information, I think probably from the city clerk about the Complete Street Safety applications?
Mayor and council, as I reported to you at the last meeting, there are three vacancies on the Complete Street Safeties Committee and I have not received any applications yet, but the deadline is October 29th, which I believe is next Thursday. And we encourage all citizens who are interested to apply by contacting me at City Hall, by email, fax or phone number. And then there's an announcement on the front page of the city website to figure out how to do that.
So are the applications on the website?
Yes.
Okay. So they can get them from you or just go right?
Or by clicking on the front page of the website and downloading the application.
Yeah. From what I hear, the committee has, there are four very strong and very committed people and they're really moving along and getting going on the various projects. The first one being, you know, the safe streets of school. So I know that that's an important thing, a lot of people care about that. So I hope there will be some others who would like to join them.
I do too.
Yeah, great. Thank you. All right. Consent calendar. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we just approved two minutes, sets of minutes for August 19th and September 3rd. Okay, so the item we're going to have next, we've decided to postpone. Do you want to say anything about it or just leave it at that? We need a motion to do that, right?
Yes, that would be appropriate to have a motion to continue the matter.
Okay. Motion to approve, public hearing to November 4th.
Second.
Do we need to have any discussion or that's it?
That's it.
All right. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I jinx this for a minute? Uh-oh. It's only 8 o'clock. How are we going to stretch this out to 10? Well, you can start telling stories, you know.
I didn't comment. We'll find out.
Randy's over there going, "Oh, no." Okay, so the next item is old business. And I assume that the city manager's going to turn this over to the Director of Public Work City Engineer because it has to do with his bailiwick, right?
Yes, sir. And actually, we were going to have Karen Kinzer do it this evening, but after we started the look about it, I thought I would come in here and make a different transition. This item recommending the use of Measure A funds for additional technical studies relative to the US 101 Candlestick Interchange makes perfect sense of your transportation... relative to the US 101 Candlestick Interchange makes perfect sense of your transportation planner, but I think that considering how many transportation studies have been conducted over the last few years in this area, I thought it might be worthwhile to slow down for just a minute and reconsider what these funds are. The legacy of the new interchange and Geneva Avenue extension, and if it's council's desire at the end, because we want to go to 10:00, we could also talk about some of the other myriad of transportation studies that have been conducted in this area over the last decade and that oftentimes can be very confusing to people who aren't involved in it every day. So, Measure A. Measure A refers to a half-cent sales tax that was approved in 1988. It created the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. It's an agency whose goals are to reduce commuter corridor congestion, improve regional connections, enhance safety, and meet local mobility needs. In 2004, county voters approved a reauthorization of this measure through 2033. So, the funds that the city would receive if council?
Two of this council's members have served on the Transportation Authority.
Yes, sir.
Administers Measure A.
Yes, sir. So, the funds that the city would receive if council approves the agreement with the TA, the Transportation Authority, come from the Highway Program, which is one of five programs the TA manages. This one in particular has the purpose of reducing congestion on roadways in San Mateo County, particularly along congested corridors. It's relevant to note, I think, that the new Candlestick Interchange and the Geneva Avenue Extension were projects discussed with the voters during the original Measure A consideration and during its reauthorization in 2004, so it's not a new project. The city of Brisbane has, for many years, been looking to increase east-west connectivity between Bay Shore Boulevard and US 101. In fact, today I was looking at its 1980 general plan and that discussed policy in favor of an east-west connection. But interestingly enough, it specifically opposed an initial proposal to extend Guadalupe Canyon Parkway due east, which would have disrupted Ice House Hill. One of the collector roads that was proposed in that plan from 1980 was to improve Tunnel Avenue in its current location due north until it connected with Beatty and then connect to US 101 going to the east. So, if you look at current Geneva Avenue, it's pretty much the eastern half of Geneva Avenue was envisioned back then. Moving into the late 1980s, the idea of extending Geneva Avenue east with a crossing of the railroad tracks was now being proposed. Policy 39 of the 1994 general plan stated, "Plan for an additional east-west corridor to redirect nondestination traffic away from Bay Shore Boulevard and to provide more direct access to US 101." Later in 1999, when the city, the city of Brisbane, was developing a memorandum of agreement with the city and county of San Francisco for what was then Phase 1 of the Bi-County Transportation Study, preliminary plans for the alignment of Geneva Avenue Extension had already been drafted. Shifting gears just a little bit, as a result of processes that we started back in 2003, both the Geneva Avenue Extension and the US 101 Candlestick Interchange projects are now included in the 9 Bay Area Regional Transportation Plan 2035, which is a 25-year moving plan that's updated on a five-year basis, prepared by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Inclusion in that plan means that projects are consistent with the regional transportation system's blueprint and that they've passed initial screening for conformance with regions' air quality compliance criteria. In 2006, the city took on the lead proponent role for completing a project study report for the Candlestick Interchange. This effort is the first phase of the planning work required by Caltrans for adding improvements to the state highway system. For a multitude of reasons, including state budget shutfalls, actually, I think I'm one of the few project managers for a PSR that has had his oversight budget for Caltrans staff canceled by two different governors. Both the Governor Schwarzenegger and then Governor Brown managed to put me back a year on course. We were delayed and we're only just now having that project ready for final signature by Caltrans. But there are other complicating factors in this work, including the hard boundaries, if you will, that were created by existing conditions for this interchange. If you think about that interchange in your mind's eye, you realize that San Francisco Bay is to the southeast of the project, which doesn't get moved very easily. Executive Park is to the northeast of the interchange. Recology is to the northwest. There are new exit ramps that were built within the last decade, just north of the site, for Paul Avenue and the Third Street bypasses. And there's a significant upslope of US 101 as you climb up it. If you've come up around through Harney and Alana, you realize that you're climbing a big grade. That makes it very challenging. So, when you start to try and piece all those things together and try to create a new interchange, whether it's an overcrossing or undercrossing and put all these new on-ramps and off-ramps in, you've got a real three-dimensional challenge. But we are hoping that that PSR is going to be signed. And the approval of that PSR, what it will do is it'll establish two alternatives for a new interchange as possible designs for future construction. But the?
Just make sure for everybody listening, the acronym, PSR?
Project Study Report.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Project Study Report. I'll try and dial that acronym stun gun back a little bit. It's just, transportation seems to be one of those areas that we love our acronyms. And unfortunately, they don't always mean the same thing, I think, so. But these two possible alternatives for future construction now establish new hard boundaries for the other transportation projects in the area. Because what they've done is they've fixed in place where the state highway system is going to end and begin. So, once you establish where that overcrossing or undercrossing is and where those on-ramps are going to come on, begin and end, you've now got other join points that every other project has to deal with.
Like the Geneva Avenue extension.
Like the Geneva Avenue Extension, yes, sir. And it makes perfect sense that you'd fix the biggest project first, but now I think we need to look at what those six years of studies have done. So, as we discussed in the staff report and the consultant's proposal, the known location, if you will, known in that we've got two alternatives and we know where they're going to be, that requires us to validate the work of other project studies that have happened, including the Geneva Avenue Extension, the proposed bus rapid transit lanes from Hunter's Point to Valvoline Park, and connections with the Caltrain Bay Shore Station. Because the goal is to make sure that the projects all have the best opportunity of interfacing well with each other and they provide the best suite of multimodal transportation opportunities to the public. Due to the evolving nature of the development projects and the transportation studies, you may have noticed that the consultant's scope and the fee breakdown assignment is slightly amorphous. We've got a boundary of a study area, we've got a boundary of projects that we wish to interface with, and then we've got a dollar range that is going to be paid for out of these Measure A funds. But what we did that intentionally, because what we were trying to do is to provide the maximum flexibility in adapting to changes during the scope of this study, because we've certainly seen it. I often tell the story about trying to integrate the bus rapid transit lanes into the interchange project. We met with three different parties in San Francisco, and I won't mention the names of the organizations, but just suffice it to say that one organization thought the BRT ought to be on the south side of Geneva. One organization thought it ought to be on the north side, and the other organization thought it ought to be in the center running lanes, and nobody really wanted to negotiate. So, those are real challenges that we have to deal with as we look at eventually, one day, putting a project on the ground. So, with that, I think I'll stop. And if the council's got any questions on this agenda item that's before you, I'd be happy to talk about those now. And if you wanted to hear about other projects as well, we could do that to fill time.
Yeah, well, I would just like you to elaborate on one thing and I have a couple of questions on the documents, but I'll let my colleagues go before that. But the one thing that we've been talking about recently in the subcommittee has been the realization that maybe, you know, building the interchange and the whole Geneva Avenue Extension in the initial phases of whatever development occurs may be more than is financially viable. And we've been thinking about some smaller versions thereof or halfway there or something or other. And I wonder if you would address that aspect of our current conversation. As you say, this is supposed to, it's kind of bringing it up to date, and that's one of the things we've been talking about.
Sure. It's definitely a fair comment and it really speaks to the staging of how you would build all these projects. The council and the listening public may recall that Chester Fung has been here a number of times. He's a planner with the San Francisco County Transportation Authority. He's talked to us about the suite of projects that have evolved out of the Bi-County Transportation Study. And even after they tried to reduce it to what they thought were the core projects, they're still at the $500,000, $600,000 mark of a cost of projects that would have to be built out of the Bi-County area. So, part of what we look for as we're doing these projects is, are there some projects that we can build partially now? You build the ultimate plan on paper, and then if you decide that, okay, well, we can't fund that whole thing, is there a piece of this that we can build? And then the only thing we have to plan for is make sure that we've reserved enough room to build that project, so we don't try and build a ship in a bottle. Some people are really good at that. Building bridges and such really isn't. And one of the early conversations that I've had, and there's no guarantee that it would happen, but certainly, and it's one of the studies this San Francisco County Transportation Authority is getting ready to kick off, on their bus rapid transit lines. They just received a preliminary planning grant on that. You'll recall that, it might have been two months ago, we came and we asked council for recommendations for who we would like to have sitting on their Citizens Advisory Committee, and it was Councilmember Lentz was appointed from the council, and then one of the representatives from the Complete Streets Safety Committee was also appointed. But one of those things that we've been?
That's happened?
They have not finalized that Citizens Advisory Committee yet, sir.
Okay, no, but I mean, our representative from the Complete Streets?
Yes, our representative, they did select, and off the top of my head, I do not recall who it was, but we provided that information to CCG. And CCG has indicated that they're going to accept the recommendations we provided to them.
Okay.
So, that's going to happen. Once that settles, it's been a bit of a moving target. I think San Francisco has had some of their citizens suggest that perhaps they didn't have quite the representation mix they wanted. So, San Francisco put another at-large seat in. They're offering another at-large seat for San Mateo. And what the folks at CCG have proposed to do is, they said, well, there are a number of citizens, we had two or three applications from citizens at large, and so they're going to review those applications and see if someone from there is an appropriate person to be on the committee. So, they'll handle that. But anyway, one of the conversations we've had with the city and county of San Francisco with their Transportation Authority is the possibility of, you know, could we leverage building a BRT, a bus rapid transit lane, and also building two lanes of Geneva Avenue Extension at the same time? Would that make sense? Would that, you know, somehow create enough synergy that it would make the project more fundable and that it would make sense for its operation and such? It's probably a good test run of it. No matter where the BRT ends up, there are going to be some challenges with it. You know, bus rapid transits are a great idea, I'm very much in favor of them, but it's very important to get the buses out of mixed-flow traffic, because if you've got them in there with cars, they travel at the same speed as cars. If you've got them in a dedicated lane, that's fine, but then it seems like a good idea until you get to an intersection. And then you realize that if you want the bus to keep making the stations at, you know, three-minute intervals, then you've got to give them some sort of priority signalization. And then what does that do to the traffic flow if they're either on the south side, the middle, or the north side, if they're running kind of alongside you? So, a lot of interesting challenges, but certainly, we think that might happen. I think it's definitely a possibility. If a project's approved at the Baylands, that the developer might have a perspective that I want to build, perhaps I want to build on one side of the tracks or the other first. And if that were the case, then they would certainly want to extend out a certain piece of Geneva, depending on where they're trying to get traffic from. Maybe initially, they want to take it off of Bay Shore. Maybe initially, they want to take it off of 101. I'm not, you know, privy. I can't guess as to what their final plans will be, because that will certainly be dependent upon whatever development project is approved by the city and by the council. Does that answer it, sir?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was hoping you were talking about. Yeah? Great. Okay. You have specific questions?
I just have a comment, and it's more, has to do with the whole project area out there. And I'm being inclusive of San Francisco, Daly City, because, you know, as I understand from the MTC, that, you know, they're really like, they don't look at things in a regional sense to me. You know, with ABAG and MTC, they look at them and like, okay, here's your city, here's the next city, here's the next city. And it's like days you change together, but they're looking at them as like little microcosms instead of a macro view. And said, oh, the only way you can get funding is, you know, like in the priority development areas or whatever you want to call them, is you got to have housing next to transportation. Well, here we are, sitting in the middle of all this housing going around, and that transportation, it's imperative that it really needs to go right through where we're at, where we don't allow housing currently. And so, you know, from a regional standpoint, that point really needs to be conveyed, I think, to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Association of Bay Area Governments so that they understand, you know, how this actually works and not look at it as a micro. And I just wanted to make that point, you know, that at every chance that we get, we as the politicians need to reiterate that and Randy, on your side, staff needs to reiterate that point also, that this really is regional and not a micro.
Couldn't agree with you more, sir. I find it really disturbing that an organization that really is the federal representative, that's the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the United States, and that's supposed to be looking at major metropolitan areas, and that is also designated as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for this area for the state of California, can't decouple that on their own.
Yeah.
It strikes me that that's sort of in their mission statement. Trouble with it.
It's maddening, you know, it just, yeah. That's my two cents. This is a long time coming. I know I've been affiliated with this from the birth of it, not the birth of me, but it seems that way.
Now, everything in transportation is a 25-year project, sir. It's just the nature of the beast when you have major transportation projects. And I get that sometimes that causes concern for some other people, because sometimes people think we're moving things too quickly, perhaps. And it's just a matter of the way this process is, it's so laborious, it's so lengthy, there's so much planning that has to happen, especially when you're on the state highway system, that if you start five years away from when you need the project, you're going to be 30 years late. I mean, for instance, if you look at the Devil's Slide project, the Lantos tunnels, those were 40 years in the coming. It's just incredible.
So, chief, close your ears, not to say gambling. Do you want to take bets on the high-speed rail? It's going to be longer than 25 years.
100-year project.
It's interesting how different opinions are across the state on it, sir. You know, I certainly have heard, and the council may have, well, you know, certainly when you're at League of California City meetings, boy, if you're from an area that's not going to be really well-served by high-speed rail, people are like, why don't we just take all that money and put it into local streets and roads? Why are we spending that money? Throw it away. It'll be interesting to see if that doesn't have other challenges it has to go through as it continues to really spend money at a pretty good rate.
Yeah, consultants are cheap.
So, do you have some things you wanted to?
Yeah, I do.
Proceed.
So, yeah, Randy, thank you for kind of laying out the map of, you know, what possibly could be done. I want to dig a little bit deeper into that. I mean, because I do approve, you know, moving forward with the funding. So, where Beatty Avenue is currently right now, based on your just kind of gut feeling and just being involved with it for so long, you know, do you see the, potentially the Geneva Avenue Extension getting onto the freeway on-ramp, being there, or do you see it perhaps south or?
Just a little bit south.
Just a little bit south.
Poor Beatty, right. I see it being just a little bit further south because the, if the easiest way to draw a line, I would think, would be into your mind's eye, kind of think of how the shoreline works in San Francisco there. And so, it's sort of, that would cross, if you were to extend it back our way, if you were to come back, you know, westerly, it's at a skew. So, that's, you're going to, we're going to cross US 101 at a skew, and so that's going to pull.
It's going to go at an angle.
Exactly.
North.
Southwest.
Southwest.
Well, I'm sorry, depends where you're coming from. If you're coming from San Francisco, we're going southwest. If you're coming from us, you're going north.
Northeast, yeah, yeah, I know, for sure. Because, yeah, because, you know, on the Candlestick side, it starts to narrow.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely going to be complicated. You're right, you know, the 101 does start to go up at that point.
That makes it really fun when you're talking about trying to put a BRT underneath or over and off-ramps flying around. You start doing it in three dimension and the folks that are geometricians and do that for a living just kind of shake their head and have to walk away for a little bit and rethink how they're going to do it. It's been a fun project, but it's really incredibly challenging.
Pretty elaborate. So, I mean, you know, if it ever does get built, I mean, right now, you're just about to get to Candlestick, it's pretty wide open there. I mean, that whole area will be just one maze of different freeway overpasses and on-ramps and exits.
And flyovers and?
Yeah.
Opportunities to get up to Third and Paul. You're absolutely right. Yeah, the signage is going to be pretty exciting.
Yes.
But it's also, if you look at, you know, but for instance, too, I mean, one of the things, but you, but to compare it to that, people look and say, oh, my God, it's, we're building a lot of traffic. If you, for instance, look at the draft environmental impact report that's going on for the Baylands, depending upon which suite of projects you're looking at, whether it's the developer-sponsored project or what the EIR is calling the community-preferred projects, that and its variants, the developer-sponsored projects is estimating for total trips a day, 40,000 to 50,000 trips a day? And the community projects are looking at? And the community projects are looking at 70,000 to 80,000 trips a day through that site.
Wow.
So it, it needs a big interchange. It needs a lot of on and off ramps to keep that moving. It really, truly does. To give you a comparison of that, Bayshore Boulevard in our heyday, back before, say, like 2005, when the economy was going along pretty well, we were seeing 20,000 to 25,000 trips a day on Bayshore.
Really?
Yeah. So triple that traffic.
Wow.
And that's what's going to have to go through there. It's a big number.
Sure, sure. Do you think, you know, that it could potentially reduce traffic on Bayshore, passing Brisbane coming from the north?
Absolutely.
So-
Absolutely. It's going to be a preferred direct route.
Sure.
I mean, certainly if you, well, like this instance was NF, National Rodeo's final was this weekend, wasn't it? I think it's this weekend and last, last weekend and this weekend? So it's happening, but if you think of some of the major events that go on at the Cal Palace, and you think about how many of those vehicles come out, and if they want to go south, they have two choices. They come back up Carter and Guadalupe and come down through Bayshore, or they go down Geneva and turn south on Bayshore. If that traffic had a direct route, if you could come out of the Cal Palace and see US 101, that's where you're going to go.
Where you're going to go, yeah.
So that's certainly going to be an immediate draw.
All right. Yeah, interesting to see the model when it is presented.
Okay. I had one more.
Oh, sure.
Just historical context, I recall now, kind of what brought us to the table, because initially, San Francisco, you know, being Rome, they were going to build a stadium out there with a, I don't know, it was like, seemed like a couple million square foot shopping malls.
Yes.
And that they did an analysis on that, they were going to use a four-way stop sign out there. And so we commented on their EIR that, according to our calculations, it'd take you four to five hours to get through the intersection during peak hours. And they go, well, we don't agree. We're going to do it anyway, you know, because we're going to do what we want. And we go, well, there's one problem. They go, what's that? They go, we own the intersection. And that's what brought us to the table in this whole thing. So it's been a long time coming, so it's kind of funny seeing that they have a three-headed monster there in the form of how that's going to work.
Yeah. And it's really interesting dealing with an organization that we are separated by this invisible line called the county line.
Yes.
But perspectives on transportation are so different-
Yeah.
-on either side of those lines. It's-
Interesting.
Yeah. I mean, we would try to accommodate traffic, and I think sometimes San Francisco would go, eh, maybe you ought to get out of your car, get in transit.
Yeah.
Whether it's effective, robust transit or not is, is the bigger challenge.
And they get a lot of, a lot of major funding, too, San Francisco.
Yeah, they're good at that.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to reiterate what we're looking at here, and then I have a couple of sort of nitpicking questions, which I kind of specialize in. We're looking at essentially approving a grant from the transportation authority of $400,000 to continue the quote preliminary planning process for this interchange that will connect to the Geneva extension. And so all we're really doing essentially is accepting that grant and then contracting with a firm to actually-
Correct.
-conduct the continuation of this preliminary-
Yes, sir.
-planning on the, primarily on the interchange.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir. And it's primarily how those other projects are impacted by that interchange now.
Right. Okay. Excuse me. And I have a couple, there was one thing that kind of puzzled me.
Okay.
And that's the timing. You know, when it talks about the scope of work, right at the beginning, on page two, it talks about 90 days, everything's going to be finished in 90 days, at least that's how I read it, this on page two. But if you look back in subsequent places, it's talked about six months, and another place it talks about a year. And so the timeframe, I found hard to figure out. And so what does this 90 days refer to? And it's certainly not consistent with things that come later in the document.
Right. You're correct, sir. It is not consistent with the other things in the document. And what that is, is it's 90 days to do a closeout report on the entire project. It's not 90 days to complete the project. It's 90 days after we, as the sponsor, accept Biggs Cardosa's final completion of the work. We then give the transportation authority a final closeout report.
So it's really final acceptance of the work on, it's not really final acceptance of the scope, it's the acceptance of the work that's been done within the scope of work. Is that right?
I think the key word there is sponsors.
Yeah.
Probably, yes, sir.
That's what I hear you saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the way it's written, it certainly confused me.
I would agree with you, sir. I think David spent a little bit more time than he would have expected on an agreement of this sort.
And I hope that, I hope that'll be clear to all concerned, so there's not a problem. I also noticed that all the, you know, the deal with the transportation authority, you can always tell when it's written by the lawyer for the other side. Because what have they protected themselves? Everything is within their sole discretion, and whatever they have to do, they'll do it when they get around to it. And so I guess it's okay because it's a transportation authority, you don't have to worry too much. But you can really tell whose, whose side's lawyer wrote the thing.
Boy, you know, sir, the funny part is, I was at a meeting the other day, and one of the staff members there, who was intimately involved with this, was complaining about the reporting you have to do to Caltrans. And I just said, really? Have you seen the reporting requirements in, in your agreement for these Measure A funds? Everybody else in the room that was a recipient of the funds all laughed, like, yeah, hey! So I guess perspectives change sometimes.
Yeah, depends on what side the table-
Yes.
Right. Okay, so that was just a sort of a, you know, comment. Then I noticed in the scope of work information, the Balboa Bart Station is in Daly City, which is kind of a surprise to me. That's on page 17.
It's actually San Francisco.
Exactly. Yeah. So I don't know where that came from.
Did they steal that station, did they?
So, and then I noticed in the, in the letter of the Biggs Cardosa, which is the consultant that kind of do the study, there are a couple of things that were not too clear. I assume it's hopefully clear between you all and them.
I hope so.
But it says here, Recology owns and operates the city's solid waste transfer facility. And that's a little unclear, what they mean by the cities, because this is a deal with Brisbane, right?
Right. Yes, sir.
And then they talk about the things that are going to go into the Recology expansion, and they just mentioned office space, maintenance, and parking, and utilities, and they say other infrastructure, but as I recall from the plan, there's also going to be, you know, materials handling and, you know, the bio-waste facility and so forth. So they don't make it clear that that's a part of what's proposed. What page you on, Ray? I'm on the Cardosa, agreement with the Cardosa.
Yeah.
That's at the end.
Towards the back, it's the second page, I believe, you're on.
Oh, I'm on page two.
Two, okay.
Okay. You got it? All that stuff I'm just talking to is in the top paragraph?
Right.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Now, it's a fair statement that that does not, it's not completely inclusive of another piece of this, which is, which is evolving, which is the Recology expansion project. And I believe that although this letter is dated more recently, this was actually taken out of their initial scope that we had dealt with them last fall in 2012 when we put that in. So again, it sort of speaks to one of the reasons why we made their scope in the professional services agreement a little bit amorphous, because so many things keep moving.
Right.
And the timelines keep going is, you know, we don't want to pin somebody down, we want them to be able to, there is at some point in time when you're developing a project and doing a study, you've got to say, okay, this is the most current information I have right now, and I've got to work with this. But we don't want to pin them down a year before they do the work, and then have it moved and say, well, you've got to study that instead of this.
Yeah, and I just hope that, you know, that's a clear understanding between Brisbane and the engineering consultants.
It is, sir. We get it. We understand that.
And also what you were talking about earlier, it's not referred to in the letter at all, and that, because that's also where we're reading as a recent evolution, namely, you know, doing it in part, but whatever you do in part, you need to not preclude the full development that you have in mind eventually.
Yes, sir.
So hopefully that needs to be included in the continuous planning process.
Yes, sir. And that really is one of the biggest reasons why we sole source Biggs Cardosa on this, is because they've been involved in the project study report from day one, that they've dealt with all the entities. So while they may need to periodically refresh and update their information, they've got people on staff, they've got subconsultants on staff that have been involved with this for as long as I have. And so it'll, it's good to retain that body of knowledge and not try and bring a new firm on board that would not know the answer to any of these questions about the issues you and I are discussing right now.
Okay. You're comfortable that they're really, will be on top of it?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. I'm very comfortable they will.
Okay, great. All right. Those are my nitpicks for this evening.
All well taken, sir. Thank you.
So we have two things we need to approve. Can we do them in one motion, or should we do them separately, Mr. Attorney? One is the deal with the transportation authority, and the other is the professional services.
Yeah. You can take care of them both in one motion.
Okay. All right. Someone like to do that?
So moved.
Okay. Easy way.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Not hearing? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Good, good try, Randy, but we still got one hour and 57 minutes.
I got paper, sir.
Okay. So that completes old business. Now we move on to new business. Who would like to? Stewart's got that.
I could talk real slowly, Clark, if you'd like. So this, the OSEC committee at their last meeting was discussing the issue of submitting comments for the draft DIR. They have, they would like to have assistance with developing the questions to make sure that the questions are worded in such a way that they would get the best response possible from the EIR consultant. They very much enjoyed, and they thought Terry did a very good job in discussing the how-to-frame questions, and they would like to see if they can use Terry to help them review their questions and give them ideas on how to better phrase the questions to get the right, to get the best response possible. I have spoken to Terry since the time I drafted this staff report, and he is available. He thinks something like this may take five hours. He doesn't quite know how many questions, how many comments we have, so it probably, you know, it might take him 10 to 15 hours of time to do that. He says that he would be available for that kind of work. He thinks there may still be money available under his existing contract to do this, this type of work. So we would need to check with him, and we would need to check with UPC to see if this would be considered part of that scope of the work. If it is, there would be no additional cost to the city. But if there is some additional cost to the city, the, you know, the anticipation would be about no more than $150 an hour. So it would be, you know, if we can get it done in 10 hours, it might cost us $1,500, not the $3,000 that the, we had additionally thought. I've got lots of time for questions.
Just to further talk about the budget for the EIR consultant to help us do the EIR commenting and understanding what we need to do at different stages. If I recall, there is also a part of that contract that he's supposed to come and educate the council when we get to the next stage, when we get to the final EIR. And I think that was a part of the contract. And so I'm wondering if the money that's still there is related to that part?
Oh.
Do I remember correctly?
Sounds about right.
Yeah? I think he was going to also do some training, additional training for Planning Commission.
For the Planning Commission, too.
For Terry.
Right, yeah.
So we'll have to check on that.
We'll check with that.
That's, that's-
Right.
So it's better to keep this separated out, anyway.
Oh, yeah. I think. No, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what we expected him still to do on basis on the contract that we already have. Okay. So I have some comments, observations, but I'm sure my colleagues do, too. Who wants to go first?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, you know, as far as, you know, up to $3,000, we'll say, just for the sake of setting a dollar figure. But it's really kind of up to UPC on whether they're going to reimburse it or not, but I'd be okay on doing a supplemental appropriation out of the general fund if that need be, or look at, you know, our open space money for this. Stuart, do you support this?
Yeah, that was my question. I mean, I want to know, since you're, you know, you run those, help run those meetings, Stuart.
You know, I think anytime we can get somebody who's had, you know, extensive experience reviewing their, reviewing the comments to make sure that they're properly worded to elicit the best response, I think that would be good. You know, I think it would be a disservice to the community if, because of the way the questions were worded, it wasn't getting the best, you know, the right kind of response. So I think having somebody like Terry who has, you know, 20, 30 years of experience in dealing with EIRs compared to, you know, even, you know, myself, who's had a lot of time in government, not with EIRs, you know, we can't use Lloyd because then Lloyd would be writing a question that he would be responding to. And if it was written, and even if it was well-written, it may still get a response that that's a project-related question. And if Lloyd wrote that question, you know, wrote the comment, and he responded in that way, it may seem as if he was trying to respond in that way. So using Lloyd in this process would not be the best. Using John in this process would not be the best person. So finding an outside expert to do it, I'm supportive of.
Okay.
The long answer, because you told me to take time.
Wasn't long enough, but it just sufficed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and then if it's okay, you know, to continue on with that, Stuart. So, I mean, I think that's, that's a pretty smart way to go. Would Terry, perhaps reconstruct, you know, potentially, you know, quite a few of these questions so that they're, so that they could be commented properly, or would he, you know, maybe perhaps say, you know, this is a, this is a project-related question or comment, not really any IR comment?
I think he would do both. I think what he would do is review the comments, and we are going to do our best in separating out the project-related questions from the EIR comments, related questions. And we've talked about that at the committee level. But he also would be able to say, you know, he'd be able to look at a comment and say that really doesn't have an impact on the EIR. If you want to have an impact on the EIR, it may be, you know, put this kind of an idea in there. So I think he would be doing some of that work as well, because he, you know, he's used to dealing with EIRs and dealing with, you know, dealing with the comments that people provide and dealing with the responses. And he'd best be able to understand, you know, how do you create a comment that shows the impact in the EIR? Because that's really what you're, that you really need to do, is to say, this comment that you really need to do, is to say, "This comment has information that may have been left out of the DIR. Here's additional information that the DIR should consider. And if it considers this, what would be the result of, you know, of the mitigation? Would it be significant or not?" So I mean, those are the kinds of things that Terry, you know, has years of experience in working through, that, you know, it would take, we would, we may struggle longer to do that, and trying to get this thing done, you know, by the November 26 deadline, you know, that's what we're shooting for, obviously. That's, you know, we're not, the other thing that we, that the committee talked about was having, you know, submitting their comments to Terry at, you know, by October 30th, around that date. So in another couple of weeks, trying to go through them, maybe November 6th at the latest, getting them back on November 13th, and then having our last meeting on November 20th to format the, you know, the final touches on those comments.
Do you think that's doable? Think that's realistic, a timeline?
We're meeting every week to meet that timeline. So they, the committee is doing everything they can to meet that timeline.
All right. All right, thank you, Stuart.
I mean, it'll be, you know, if you ask any of the committee members, they tell you it's a tight timeline. But they are doing, you know, we have, we have met weekly since the end of August. Since the last time that they were here, we've been meeting weekly to meet the timeline. So they are putting in the effort, and they spent a lot of time reviewing the document to try and get the best comments possible.
Thank you.
I guess I have a different kind of aspect to raise, and that is the question of equity. If we're gonna give the Open Space and Ecology Committee this kind of support, which is nice, what about the Citizens Committee that's working on the draft DIR? They're, they're meeting very regularly with subcommittees, and, and they don't even have staff at their meetings during the meeting. I mean, so they're doing it all on their own, and a lot of volunteer work there. And if we're providing this kind of professional assistance to one of our committees, we should provide it to the other, too, in my opinion.
The committee discussed that at their meeting. What they thought was that they could only ask for assistance for themselves, if that would be council's...
No, I understand. I'm not saying that Open Space and Ecology is doing anything wrong. I'm just saying that they've asked for this, and it seems reasonable. But then what about the other, the other committee that's doing a comparable, maybe even as much work? And they even have less staff assistance than OSEC has.
Okay.
What do you think?
$3,000 to cover it?
Yeah. I think we just ought to do...
We'll cover both.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, staff can, I'm sorry to move it along. I really apologize.
I'm doing my best. You've given me direction. I'm trying to follow the direction.
No, I mean...
$3,000 for both.
I think the $3,000 would cover...
Okay, I'll talk to Terry about that.
...off of that to him, so, yeah.
I mean, we could send him lots of questions, and he wouldn't know who they came from, anyway.
Right. So do you think that'll cover it, though?
You know, from what he said, is he thinks he could review, you know, he thought he could review our questions or our comments in, you know, five-plus hours. I just know how many comments we have. I don't know if he realizes that.
I think he's being unrealistic.
I think he is. But I think 20, 20, you know, 20-plus hours for all the comments are probably would be realistic. We're not having him come to a meeting, we're not having a conversation with him, we're just...
Right, just look at stuff.
Just looking at stuff.
Right.
Yeah. I'll check with him.
Okay. So should we say $3,000 tonight, and then if that turns out to be a problem, then we can always come back and revisit it, I guess?
Well, the next meeting would be after, when we would probably be sending him questions. Because it'll be the first meeting in November, which would be November 5th, and we're hopefully gonna already be in the process. You know, I think we can do $3,000. If I need to find more money, we will look within the budget, within a budget to find additional money. We won't ask for another supplemental appropriation.
Okay. But you're gonna go ask UPC first, though?
Well, we will see, yes. We will see from UPC whether or not that they are willing to cover this.
And if not, then I agree with Clark that, that we should support it.
Yeah. But we will do no more than $3,000 in supplementary appropriation.
Okay, all right.
I, I know, maybe we will have some savings in other places.
Okay. All right. Sounds fine to me.
Thanks.
That's your motion, Clark?
That's it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to staff reports. City manager's report.
I don't have anything under Item A tonight, but I do can update the council on Item B.
Okay.
We did have a council subcommittee meeting, I believe, last week with regards to the issues dealing with Baylands code enforcement on the two companies that are working out there in terms of both dirt and the concrete recycling. We've discussed, went through a air quality plan that staff has been working with the Bay Area Air Quality Management Agency, as well as the operator out there. And we also talked about the interim use of the current permittee out there as they are going, they're gonna be going through a process to get a new permit for five years. But in between now and the time that that happens, we also wanted to have a discussion with them about their practices, activities, and what they're gonna be doing in terms of the stockpiles out there. So we had a pretty good discussion about that. Staff was asked to go back to the permittee and ask them to provide some additional information. We also discussed the ability to put the, basically, to adopt the air quality plan in reference to whatever, both interim and long-term plan we have out there. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment. We anticipate getting back to the council with that information probably sometime in November, and then have a discussion at that point in time. And then, as I indicated, the applicant will be moving forward with their permit before the Planning Commission. That's, they've made their application. That's currently going through environmental review at this point in time. But the idea was that we would have a fairly robust conversation at the council level, so that you can provide direction to the Planning Commission before they review the, the permit. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment. Since two of you were involved in the meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
If you want to comment, go ahead.
I wanted to add something, but... Want to, Clark?
No, everything he said, he was talking to you, Cliff.
Yeah, right. And a general audience, assuming there is one. I think another aspect of it, which was eye-opening to me, was how complex the use permit process is, and how many things need to be collected in terms of information, and how many things need to be ascertained, how many things need to be negotiated. And so, you know, getting that new use permit is, is gonna take quite a while. And probably the Planning Commission itself will take quite a while, so we're talking about, you know, maybe six months or so, or more. And one of the things we talked about was, well, what do we do in the interim that gives us more enforceability? And what we talked about was using the grading permit. And you can put a lot of stuff in a grading permit, including dust, dust control measures. And hopefully, that can be processed, you know, because it's more specific to certain things, can be processed faster than, than a use permit. And so that was one of the things that we had quite a conversation about. And then the staff was gonna go and pursue that, because they did have some information that was sort of halfway there for the grading permit, and, but there are other things that weren't there yet, like the whole issue of elevations. So that needs to still be addressed. But I think that was a real breakthrough, in my mind, anyway, that, that we do have this other method of getting some more specific enforceability in the near rather than, you know, longer term.
Some teeth into the bite.
Teeth into the bite, right, exactly. Does that match with your recollections?
Yeah, we never actually dealt with this as a grading permit, so that's...
This all new, yeah, right.
Is your mic on, there? Oh.
Yeah, I have a drink.
So we've, we've never used a grading permit process in the past, but we're now looking at doing that, where we have, we have an interim to the interim. And so we'd like to get a little bit more control on what the plan's gonna be. And the long-term plan probably deals with both sides of Powell Avenue, but the short-term plan in terms of grading deals just with this Powell Avenue. And that's Mary, I think the other key component is that we can adopt within a grading permit, the air quality standards and air quality plan. And so we can have both of them to enforce.
So, you know, with the current operation, you know, being on the east side of the tracks, you know, if we looked at reducing elevations, is there a risk of running out of space to accommodate, you know, some of the future projects that, that the recycling operation would like to, to take on, like Candlestick, for example? And if, you know, if you couldn't do, if you couldn't accommodate it on the east side, and then you mentioned the west side. So I wonder if you guys had, you know, talked about that?
I don't think we've talked about it in great detail. Two points that I would make is that, as I understand it, if there is a contract with the Candlestick project, that the primary exporting situation, so dirt will be off of the site.
Arts to the, I thought it was on. Maybe that's the problem. So with regards to the west side, it's much more complicated, because it not only involves us, it also involves DTSC as the regulator out there. And as you, as we've also, you know, discovered in all of this, the, the dirt that's out there now is all gonna have to be moved.
Yes.
You know, for the final cap, in terms of any final development. So what you see out there right now is really almost irrelevant to the final plans that would happen on that site. It's all gonna have to get moved and changed and moved around, so.
Sure, and they might prepare the, the west side for remediation, and then take a lot of that soil that's on the east side, and then use it.
I would think so, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
But the near-term grading permit wouldn't address all that complexity.
No, what we're talking about is just trying to deal with what's on the east side in some manageable fashion over the next, you know, year or so.
Sure, sure. But, you know, a lot of the concern, though, you know, from the community was the, you know, the curtain heights, and, you know, are we kind of reducing that, that visual impact? And so...
Yeah, but the grading permit, as we understand it, you know, can do that.
Sure. Okay. All right. Well, it'll be interesting to see what you guys finally come up with, then.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. On to the next.
Mayor and council, I've got a report out from the October 15th Bayland Subcommittee Meeting that I'd like to give, and summarize what was discussed in that Subcommittee Meeting. As the council is aware, there are two processes, two processes involving the Baylands at this point. There's the SEQA Environmental Review Process, which is currently in progress, with a draft DIR issued, comment period underway, and the next step would be the preparation of the final DIR. The focus of the Subcommittee Meeting was the separate but related land use review and planning process, which will determine the appropriate land use for the Baylands as a result of that land use planning process. The Subcommittee met last week for what was a preliminary discussion of the land use planning processes and legal issues associated with those, those individual land use processes. So what the Subcommittee discussed is that as the final DIR nears completion, the planning process will be brought back before the council for final review and approval, so the council will be fully advised and vote as a council in terms of the, the final process moving forward. There will be a public opinion survey to ascertain what the public's input is on potential Bayland uses, and that will be early on in the land use planning process. There will be reviewed by the Planning Commission of the submitted draft-specific plan, and the Planning Commission will make recommendations to the council. But ultimately, the council will review those recommendations and will be in control of the approval rejection or modification of both the draft-specific plan and the general plan for the Baylands. The Subcommittee emphasized that there will be multiple opportunities for public participation and comment during the planning review process, both early in the process and before both the Planning Commission and the council. And finally, the intent of the council, as expressed to the Subcommittee, is that at some point, there will be a public vote on the recommended land use plan that's devised by the council prior to final adoption by the city. The Subcommittee will continue to work with staff to develop a chart, which will show how the recommended planning process will work. And that chart and further information will be presented to the public and the council at a future meeting. So that summarizes the Subcommittee's work. Again, several of you were present, and feel free to add any comments that you have as well.
That was directed to you, Clark.
Yeah, thanks, Cliff. I figured that one out.
I'd like to just sort of elaborate one thing that you said.
Sure.
Which I thought was, I felt it was a really productive meeting. All the, all the players were there, and a lot of creative ideas. And what we were raising was a whole lot of issues about, okay, what do we do first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and what kind of sequence do we need to follow, and what does the law require? And at the same time, we want to make sure that we have all the proper community input along the way. And also, we want to make sure that the council sets the parameters. And so how do we make all that happen? And so we really set out quite a challenge, I think, to the staff, to say, "Okay, how can you establish a, basically, a framework of process to make all these things happen?" And that's kind of the homework that we asked them to, to work on. And I think that'll probably come back to us first. And then, once we're agreed, then obviously comes to the full council for approval of the, essentially, the, the next stages of dealing with the DIR and the, the planning process for the Baylands.
So you'll come to the council with a recommendation?
Yes.
And then, at that point, we'll say aye or nay or modify.
Right, exactly. Okay. So I wanted to add. Did you want to add any more?
Yeah, you guys said it all.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, move on to mayor council matters. Any reports, county-wide assignments, CCG, airport roundtable, blah, blah?
I had a CCG meeting last Thursday, you know, and it wasn't a whole lot on, on the agenda, but we did actually have PG&E come and give an update on all the work that's going on in all the cities. And the major piece of work, Randy's gone, so the major piece of work that'd be going on in Brisbane is tying in, I think they call it Gas Line 101. Are you familiar with that, Clay? They'll be tying it into the other, the other line, basically, for, or to balance pressurization. If, you know, one, one line goes under and needs more pressure or something like that, they get transferred by spray-opening automatic valves. But certainly, they're going through a lot of stuff. And their programs and stuff that they're going through is they're gonna be asking to see California Public Utility Commission to be able to raise rates for their stuff, for their capital stuff.
Of course.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it. And the chair, I think that was his last meeting, actually, because he's not running for reelection, and therefore will resign in November.
So there'll be a, a new election for chair of...
Yeah, we have a vice chair right now, yeah. So reelect a vice chair, or elect a new vice chair, and probably promote the vice chair to chair.
Okay. Who is that?
Mary Ann Nyheart from Pacifica is the vice chair.
Yeah. I know her. Okay. All right. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Cliff?
Yeah, it's been pretty quiet the last couple of weeks. So, but I have meetings. I have a heart meeting on Wednesday.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other Subcommittee reports? Yeah, okay, good. Written communications. I think the only one I really have is, is in the packet, so... Cherry, do you want to talk about that? about that?
You received a letter from Eggbag asking that the Bayside Cities and Counties seat, there is one seat up for election or appointment. They're asking for people to apply. And I've attached for you the current governing board members and the composition of the governing board, which tells you about the six different types of members, I believe it's six here, actually, seven different types of members that are on there. So I guess it's just before the council tonight to see if you have any recommendations, or if anyone is interested in applying themselves, or if you know anybody else in the community, or somebody in the county you wanted to support.
Thank you. Yeah, I just thought it was, because there's this question and answer about this organization, the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, and it's a pretty good Q and A. The reason I thought we want to keep it in mind is that this is the organization that will fund wetlands restoration, and we might very well be looking to them to help us. And I think we had this conversation about a year ago, when another position was open. And you note that our preferred occupant of that seat did actually end up there, and that's Supervisor Dave Pine. I guess you noticed that, because we talked about that, didn't you, remember? This seems like one of those, this open seat now is, you know, really for, for big players. And I don't think we have, you know, much of a chance, so I wasn't going to suggest that we recommend anybody unless somebody really wants to go for it. But I thought it would be a good opportunity to bring this organization again to our attention, and also note that Dave Pine did, you know, did get there, like we were in favor of last time.
Well, I think we should at least give her, you know, some thought, if any of us want to.
Yeah, if somebody wants to do it.
Because I think it's a worthwhile.
It is, if we have, was it November 29?
Yeah.
You have to submit your letter of interest.
Yeah. I think he'd be a good candidate, Ray.
Yeah? No, thanks.
That was your answer.
I just thought I'd try, so.
Thank you. Okay, so that was the written communication we had. And that brings us to oral communications, number two.
We had a letter here, too. Oh, that's different, huh?
What's that?
Oh, it was a letter to Stuart. Maybe that wasn't part of my packet. It was in there. It said, "Dear Stuart." This is from a.
Don't read it out loud.
It's from the Silver Spot Cooperative, and they just wanted to thank you for your role in, in helping make their Silver Palooza event incredibly successful. And I guess that's part of your Recreation Director, but anyway, it kind of goes on, so.
Yeah.
Very nice letter.
Yeah, I mean, Supervisor, that worked on that mostly with Steve Beatty.
Yeah.
So he did a good job in making sure that work, that went off without a hitch.
Okay, good. Oral communications, number two. If you have anyone who's, we still have two people in the audience, if you want to say anything to us, now's your chance. Otherwise, just wave, you know? And here we are, Clark. Five after nine, right?
Well, we tried. Sure, staff is disappointed.
Fine.
So you want to do the formal thing, just so you can feel good about? Move to adjourn?
Yeah, I'd like to move to adjourn in memory of Noble Vanover, a longtime Brisbane resident. And I actually have known Noble most of my life, you know, and pretty well. So he'll be missed, and certainly by his family, and a lot of Brisbane citizens, too. So, like I said, he was a guy that would walk around, see him walking every day, and wearing his baseball cap, and walk all over Brisbane. And I used to tell him, "God, Noble, I feel ashamed." I go, "You outwalked me." So anyway, but he, he'll be missed, and like, close in his memory.
And I'll second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We did it. Thank you all.